All right. This begins our June Facilities and Operations Committee virtually calling this meeting to order. Thank you for all those in attendance and for those who might be in the participant room waiting for public comment, we'll get to that soon. Let's start with Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, do we have an approval of the minutes for May 27, 2020, Facilities and Operations Committee meeting? Okay. Well, minutes are approved. Were there any comments or questions? Sorry, I forgot to ask that. None. Seeing that, we'll remain approved then with the minutes. Let's move on to public comments. Do we have anyone in the waiting room who wishes to speak?
This will be the time for the people that are in our attendee room watching the meeting tonight. If you'd like to make any public comment, you would raise your hand with the interface at the bottom of your screen. There's a little blue raise your hand. Once you raise your hand, I will give you the ability to just address the committee. I see no blue hands up. Just a reminder, it will be an opportunity for comments at the end of this committee meeting as well. I think that's it for now. Mr. Casa.
Thank you, Mr. Gellmer. Mr. Schneider, if we can move on to gifts to the district, please.
Yes, the first item, Mr. Linsky, could you put up the gift to the district? Hattfield Elementary School, the sixth grade committee has requested to gift the district two park benches for their playground in a total value of $400. Once approved, this will go to, if this is approved by the committee, we'll go to the board for approval so that they could purchase those benches.
Any questions or comments from the committee? Okay, let's have a vote then. Should we move this on to our action meeting, correct? This be for action? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll move that forward for action meeting. Thank you very much. It's great news. And we can move on to informational items now, Mr. Schneider.
Yes, the first informational item includes a presentation by Mayor Herbert and Mr. Al Kraus for the borough, Lansdale Borough Electric Service Rates. They were asked to attend this evening's meeting and provide some insight. So, Mr. Kraus? Mr. Herbert?
Thank you. This is Mayor Herbert. I'm gonna just quickly throw it over to Andy. I appreciate the opportunity for the borough to come and present this document to, to the board. And, and we're very excited to share our perspective on the, the value that the borough brings as far as Lansdale Electric is concerned. Andy, I'll let you take it from here.
Okay, everybody hear me okay? Thank you, Mayor Herbert. First of all, I'm a proud North Penn graduate myself, class of 2003 over at North Penn High School. I'm also a proud father of a young gentleman at Inglewood Elementary going into fourth grade this year. So, thank you everyone for, for all the time and effort you put in on the school board. Much appreciated. I know what it takes to do these things. So, anyway, thank you, President and Vice President and members of the board. Mayor Herbert, I'll tell you, I usually don't read from a script, but I do want to read a little bit from an email I sent to our mayor, our borough manager, Mr. Ernst, our council president, Mr. Brunel, earlier this week. So, before we look at the numbers, you're gonna see in the numbers, the numbers do not lie. We are definitely higher in the two rate categories that the, that the school district buildings are in, your four properties metered by Lansdale Borough. But compared to, we're definitely high compared to Pico or PPL, but let me tell you why I'm proud to call Lansdale Electric my home and why it's a little different than those investor owned utilities. So, that first page that's, that's on the, on the share screen there, that is just a page out of our rate resolution that was passed in 2015. So, we try to stabilize rates for long periods of time across the rate classes, and we've done that since 2015. We are working hard as a borough. The mayor is heavily involved in this also to find different ways that we can bring in revenues. We don't rely so much on the electric department to subsidize other needs for the borough. But let me tell you a few things here about Lansdale and why it's a unique situation. All right, so, many in North Penn school buildings are outside of Lansdale Borough. And I'll ask, what benefits does Pico, PPL offer to its communities? And that's what's different about Lansdale Electric. Right, so for our raised rate, we have a fully staffed police department. In recent years, we, we are now fully staffed. In recent years, we weren't. A public library, two community swimming pools that will open on July 1st, and under normal, normal circumstances, a ton of community programming and miles of well-kept parks. I do say this because we are focused on the quality of life in Lansdale as a community and not focused on how our profit, we're a not-for-profit entity, but how our profit benefits individuals like most IOUs. We focus on quality of life for the entire borough, and that comes as a premium in our case. Lansdale's electric, Lansdale's, Lansdale Electric's profit from rate revenue is not the same as profit in the investor and utility world like Pico or PP&L. Our profit is directly put back into the borough. As where the IOU profit goes to shareholders and overhead. We funnel anywhere on an annual basis from 5.5 to $6 million to fund our capital plan, annual operations and quality of, quality of life items that I stated above. Attached are the comparisons for all the North Penn School District Buildings in the borough Lansdale. And I did want to say that, you know, the rates are higher than Pico and PP&L, but that value-added service is offset by those rates to our community. That is the actual putback to that community. So, our shareholders are residents who we provide that service to, not just electric service. You're paying for a whole lot more than that in the borough Lansdale. So, I did want to talk about how the municipal rates, they're structured a little differently than IOUs. If you think about it, our rate base is much smaller. So, we're three square miles, you know, in the borough Lansdale, and we have just shy of 9,000 customers. When you take the a million or a million and a half, whatever Pico has, they have a much broader rate base. Our load makeup is mostly residential, so our residential rate is the most economical, and that's for our residents. The business rate is higher. There's a couple, you're in two different rates, the school district, depending on the metering. One is the primary rate you buy, high tension, and the other is general service with demand. So, you are using quite a bit of electricity. But we designed it that way to try to stabilize, stabilize rates for long periods of time, and we've done that for many years. So, last time we had a rate increase was 2015, and then that rate increase has to show, much like the school district has to show, what that actual increase is gonna pay for. So, there's many ways that we can restructure rates, but then there will be a budget shortfall gap, like you, you folks all know, that we contend with every year, just like the school district. And then we have to start to look for ways to either bridge that gap or start to cut services, quality life services that, that we feel important in the borough Lansdale. So, four properties in the borough. And if you look at the numbers there, Lansdale, if you want to, can you go to the next page there, Bob? Is Bob running it? How about the next one, Bob? There you go. Okay, there's four properties in the borough, and we can go through each of them. So, you, the first one is York Elementary School. I was actually a lineman when we redid the service over there, maybe about a decade or so ago. But if you look here, you're looking at, this is an apples-to-apples comparison to the investor-owned utilities. This is all your fees added in. You guys had given us some numbers that the mayor had shared with me, so we took that and went back to our engineer and took our rate ba, or our rate page out of the resolution and had them put together for all four properties, so you can see the whole picture there. All right, so this is general service with demand, so this is a smaller customer than Pendale would be. This is a smaller customer than the, the electric, not the electric, the education services building on Hancock Street. They're both built at primary. So, you can look at that rate there, it's 18 cents, which is definitely higher than Pico and PPL, but those Pico and PPL rates fluctuate, they can fluctuate, well, every three months, I think they can get a rate case with PUC. Not that they do, but they've gone down a little bit over the last couple of years, and we've tried to stay stable. We haven't tried. We have stayed stable since 2015. So, you can see here, that's 2015, that's why it says Lansdale 2015, that was our rate tariff. And then if you look at Pico, this is June 1, 2020, PPL is June 1 of 2020, so these numbers are current. It's apples-to-apples comparison, when you look at the monetary value, and I know that's what you, you folks have to look at, the dollars and cents of it. But when you look at all those value-added services that I spoke about, that's what us, that's what our borough as a community looks at. So, I like to tell people, it's not really apples-to-apples, because there's, you know, a municipal, small municipal electric company is a little bit different financially structured than a large IOU. In Lansdale, we have some of those property taxes in the area, so 5.75 mils. A lot of that property tax, low property tax is made up by the electric revenue. So, that revenue then, my department, operations, salary, and the purchase of wholesale electricity were roughly a $14 million a year expense, and we bring in around $20 million. You know, we break, break even there, and then $20 million, so five of that, between five and six goes to either debt service or to fund capital projects or to bridge the operational gap for the following budget year. All right, so you can look there, there's graphs here, and like I said, the numbers don't lie. You'll see where we're higher. We just didn't want to give you these graphs and not tell you, you know, how the, how the rates are actually structured. So, then we did, the second one is, is that still York Avenue? Yeah. Yep, the second one we did was North Penn Educational Services Building, and that's out on Hancock Street. So, you can see that's in that, that primary rate, which is a little more economical. We went from 18 down to 14 in some cases. The reason the rate floats up and down like that is because it, it depends on how much electricity you use. So, when you guys are going through this, if you want to go back to that first page, it does explain how that's structured. And it shows Pico, 10 cents, 11 cents. Yeah, it shows there. The general service, that primary rate, if you go down a little bit.
And we do have copies of this report as well. The rest of the committee has it, so.
Yeah, so, the 14.94 cents, that's for the first 5,000. And then if used over 5,000, it drops down to eight cents a kilowatt hour.
So, Mr. Kraus, and please feel free, I don't want to cut you off from, from making some more poignant.
No, no, that, that, that's really, I just wanted to do an introduction and tell you how our rates were structured. You know, you guys can digest the numbers here. We are a working borough, so I'm giving you the information, we'll let you digest it, and you guys give us feedback, and we'll be happy to work with you.
And that's, I'm happy for you putting together, together this information, especially the apples, the apples aspect, and giving us something to continue to talk about. Certainly, we don't want to raise any questions or even understand that we're gonna have complete answers tonight, but I, I should have provided a bit more of a setup there. And, you know, why we got to this point is because we were looking at, you know, the electricity rates in the last Facilities and Operations Committee, we noticed, you know, the difference in costs. And as a committee, as a school board, we're committed to transparency and communication, and honestly, trying to make sure that we get the best deal for our taxpayers, return on investment. So, I then requested if we could have this informational session so that we could learn more and begin to have that conversation, because at the same time this happened, we did have a power outage. And many of us are aware that Lansdale Electric also came online a lot more quickly than, say, some Pico customers.
Right.
And we overlay this with NAP Elementary coming onboard, which currently isn't a Lansdale Electric customer, but, but could be. We want to make sure that we at least practice some due diligence and explore all of our options so that we can understand, do we need to have further discussions? Or do we say, you know what, we tried, this is just the way that the rates are, and we'll move on from here, but in full disclosure, laying our cards out, that's why the board wants to have this conversation.
Absolutely, Mr. Casa, and we wouldn't want it any other way. We're the same way. The borough loves to be transparent, our council, I think is one of the most transparent in the area, and you can see that, the, the different online documents that we have, very much like the school district. We've had a long, a great relationship with the school district, I worked with Tom many years ago in the demand, demand response program within the district. So, right now, for, for the time being, my recommendation for NAP School is to stay with Pico just for a dollar and cents aspect of it. But on the service end, we do recover a lot faster than those larger utilities, and you're, you're paying a little bit more for that, and we're feeding that back into the community. It's definitely a municipal electric company for the people, by the people.
So, Mr. Kraus, what I hear then, and correct me if I'm wrong, that's part of, you know, we're at least, you're keeping the money in the community, kind of shopping where, you know, we're paying where, where we shop.
Yeah.
Actually, that money stays. So, it's understanding that investment, which is, this is new to me, so thank you for this explanation. I have one question, I'll open it up to the committee then, questions and comments. If NAP is added, then what I'm assuming based on your comment is, there's not, there's likely not going to be a major impact on the, on the current rates as we see them? Or is that a conversation you and Mr. Schneider need that?
Yeah, there, there wouldn't be, I don't think there would be a big impact there, no.
Thank you. Committee members, any questions or?
Hi, this is Kathy Wesley, Mr. Kraus?
Yes.
Hi. I'm sorry. Because, and with doesn't work well. So, I do have a few questions, and I appreciate this being a municipal corporate business. One question I have to start is, is Lansdale Electric planning to increase rates over the next few months? Is there anything in the works? Because what I would want to do, I think that based upon the information you provided tonight and questions I'd like to go down, that I would want to hear between Mr. Skrocky, Mr. Schneider, and yourself or who else else in your organization, is that those, any increase in rates that you may want to socialize to all of the customers? The school district would not see that until we come to closure and understanding of everything. And that may not be a, that's a statement from me. I, I don't know, and you're planning to increase rates, but something I would want our district not to have to incur until we've, understand, you know, what you're talking about, the, the money goes back into the community. But what I would like to understand, and not for this meeting, I would like to understand, I think you said $5 million goes back into capital projects, so, you know, things such as upgrading of the transmission and distribution, because those costs per kilowatt hour are generation, transmission, and distribution, correct?
Correct.
It's apples-to-apples.
Correct.
Okay, so, I would want to know, I would want to know several technical things to understand what you're saying, and try to quantify the benefit to the school district and to Lansdale in terms of, I get it, you brought customers back on quicker, but what's the upgrade to the transmission and distribution lines? What is your, what is your return to service when an outage occurs? What is your, you know, let's say for the, for your transmission system, how many failures have you incurred versus, you know, what is actually Pico's issue? Things like that, because I really want to understand quantitatively, as John, as Mr. Casa said, that we are, we are responsible to get the bang for the buck, and the costs are, are 100% higher than Pico and PPL. And you know what? If, if that's the way it is, but we can quantify as a board those additional benefits, then you've got, we have information to go back, and if someone comes and say, well, why are you paying, why are we paying so much money for this? Well, this is why, and we can be very technically specific.
Understood, Ms. Wesley, and I'm happy to work with everybody, the committee members, happy to have our staff make sure the school district is making the right decision. And to answer your first question, you were a little broken up there, Kathy, but let me answer your first question. Municipalities, at least Lansdale Borough, I've been with the borough now for a few decades, a couple decades now, and we don't, we don't raise electric rates mid-year. I've never seen that done. Usually what happens is they're, they're adopted with the next year's budget, so it would happen in December. Every two years, we, it's good practice as a municipal electric company, every two years we perform a rate study that's done by a third party. So, without the rate study being done, I would not recommend to my council to raise rates. But like I said, in 2015, we did, and we've been able to hold that line since 2015 where Pico and PPL fluctuate.
And Mr. Kraus, was that, did you hold the line on all three components of the rate?
Yes, being, yes, being a municipality, it was a percentage increase, so it wasn't one class or the other class. It was, I think, it was like a 10% increase, and then before that, I think they weren't raised for like eight years before that.
No, I'm sorry, I asked, my, if I'm breaking up, tell me, I just heard from another school member, I'm breaking up. What I meant was, I'm not talking about the class of, the class of customer, I was speaking about, did you, was it the generation or the pipes and wires that required you? Where did, where did the monies go? Was it to pay for the generation or the hardware?
No, it, it was actually not to pay for, so like I said, it funds that capital fund, but not just for electric. It funded for all the other funds, the general fund, which incorporates the police department, our DPW, our public works department. So, you have three revenue funds in the borough, so you have taxes, electric, and sewer. So, a lot of that increase was to fund capital projects to make sure that we had a physically sound budget for years to come, and we like to budget five years in advance, and now we're even trying to go five to seven years in advance. Obviously, the pandemic has, has caused some issues there for us, but it allows us to budget. So, I wouldn't say that that increase was for any more transmission or any of the generation. If you look now, we're purchasing electricity, and I'll tell you right out there, around six to seven cents a kilowatt hour. Now, the price of natural gas is down, it plummeted during the pandemic, it hasn't recovered yet. So, electricity is cheap to buy now out on the spot market, but municipals don't buy on the spot market because we want to be able to budget, so then we can allow our customers to budget annually. And that's what happens at different parts of the state if you don't have that type of rate built in. It's where Mrs. Smith's bill in May, because it was mild and she didn't have to run air conditioning or heat, was $65, but then we get hit, called in the wintertime with a polar vortex or a heat wave, and the utility had to buy more power on the spot market when it was in demand, and then her bill becomes $600 the next month.
I understand.
Right, so. It was more.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, it was more for the funding of the capital plan and operations. Like I said, the electric department, we've been trending, I've worked very hard the last seven years as supervisor to trend our expenditures down, and they continue to trend down year after year. And you'll see that, we'll share that information with you when you see the whole, you know, we want to show you the whole picture, to show you why.
I'll defer back to the, to the committee chair, Mr. Casa, you know, that we could work through this offline and just understand this further, so we're an informed board and we can see if there's opportunities for reduced cost. So, thank you so much. This is a great start. I love this stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wesley. If, if you could follow up directly maybe with Mr. Kraus and report back to us as a committee would probably be most efficient. Thank you.
I have a quick, sorry, interjection. I apologize, Mr. Casa.
No, don't.
But, Mr. Kraus and I actually spoke today, I'm a resident of the borough, and there are, you know, as we know, NAP is within the borough boundaries, but is on Pico, and then there are houses and streets nearby NAP where those houses are on Pico, and there's always been kind of, it's always been passed down that, that we're not able to access Lansdale Electric. And we confirmed, for me as a resident today, that we are not able to access Lansdale Electric. And so, those houses around the, you know, that are Pico but in the borough, how is that different for NAP? Is NAP, are you able to, you know, is there the possibility of tying into Lansdale Electric? Or is it very similar to those houses within the borough that they're not, it's just not possible because there's not access to a Lansdale Electric pole?
Yep, so, so, good to talk to you again. So, and I will tell you there, so the, the actual line that runs down Frederick, there's a high voltage line that runs down Frederick, right around the corner from you guys, that runs, runs down to through NAP School's property and feeds the neighborhood Valley Book Drive there by the creek. So, that line passes right through there, and it doesn't conflict with any peak, other Pico lines. So, we would be able to do a direct build-out from that line to NAP on their property. The problem comes when you have multiple houses on a block, and then you have a Lansdale pole line on one end of the block, and you have a Pico pole line that tees into that. So, if there's houses in the middle, the utility won't build that pole line, and that's why some houses in that neighborhood have Pico, some houses in the neighborhood have Lansdale Electric. And what happened in the 90s with deregulation, I think it was either 95, 1995 or 1997, state legislature was passed, so state law went into effect, that we are not allowed to shop around other customers and vice versa. But if Pico decided that they didn't want NAP School as a customer anymore, they could terminate their contract with NAP School. That is not easy to do. I, I cannot recommend it by state law. I can tell you what we can and can't do. So, you are correct in saying up there in that neighborhood that you guys cannot switch to Pico or to Lansdale from Pico, and it's a, more of an infrastructure piece than anything else. Usually, if the person's right on the end of the line and it's one house, Pico will say, fine, we, you know, you can have that customer. But if I call them and say, I have to set four poles or attach to five of your poles to take three of your customers, they're not gonna let that go.
Right.
And we wouldn't want them to do that to us either. It's kind of a, it works both ways, and we don't want Pico coming in and scooping up a bunch of our customers.
So, if we could, thank you for these questions. I think we're gonna have a follow-up conversation probably based on additional questions the committee might have. Mr. Schneider, Mr. Skrocky, any closing thoughts or insights before I move to the next topic?
Well, I appreciate Mr. Kraus coming tonight. That's a excellent explanation, and I also appreciate his transparency, sharing that, you know, basically the utility provides $6 million back to the borough. I didn't realize the magnitude of that. And this is a rhetorical question, Mr. Kraus, but feel free to answer. I'm going to ask the question, but assume that there's no flexibility with the municipal utility that the school district, since we're taxing the same taxpayers in the community, that the school district could have a different rate than any of the other participants in the Lansdale Electric program.
That's something that we could absolutely look at, and that should all be part of this bigger picture that we work together on as a partnership here. So, yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Kraus, one other thing, as we're, as you're preparing for when we do meet with you, I am interested to know about any initiatives. I know that Pico and PPL provide energy assessments, environmental assessments. So I think that would be something that, as a board member, I would like to hear about what could be offered to the district for energy assessments. Now, NAP is undergoing a massive renovation, that will be completely improved efficiencies. But for the other schools that are not, it would be helpful to know what you could offer with that. That to me would be a quantitative response to the, you know, to say, to justify an additional cost in this rate that is charged.
Yeah, and there's, there's a few different options there as well, Kathy, we'd be happy to talk about this.
Thank you.
Mr. Schneider, any closing comments?
No, Mr. Kraus, Mr. Herbert, just thank you for coming in, sharing this information, and I look forward to working with you in the future on this.
Thank you, Mayor Herbert, Mr. Kraus.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our next topic, NAP Elementary and Crawford Stadium update, please, Mr. Schneider.
Yes, thank you, just a, a quick update on the construction progress. ICS, our owner's representative and construction manager, provide this information, they'll be providing this on a monthly basis. Our construction manager, Bill Slaughter, will be providing this in the, in the future. And, but I just wanted to bring this first report to the committee. At NAP Elementary School, asbestos abatement has commenced. Demolition, some exterior demolition has started. Traders starting to mobilize, construction fence has been installed around the property. And the mechanical contractor has been scanning ceilings for coordination drawing prep. And we did have a Montgomery County Conservation District pre-start meeting, which allowed us to commence. And at the Crawford Stadium, the general contractor's mobilized. We have demolished the track surface, the bleachers, construction fences installed, the erosion sedimentation controls were installed, and the traders starting to demo the buildings and fields. So moving forward, the next item, we'll show, we'll show you a schedule from the NAP Elementary School, but we will start to continue on this middle process. We'll be finalizing requirements for the Borough for final permitting. We're going to expedite a flashing light signal for NAP, we're going to try to get that in over the summer. We're not quite sure if we're going to be able to get that installed in time for the, the fall, but the Borough requested for us to do a diligence with that. And in the construction, we're going to start phase one. Phase one is the addition, demolition of the library and the classroom addition. You will start to see the construction entrance starting in the next week with office trailers and construction entrance being installed. At the Crawford Stadium, basically, we're just going to be doing demolition over the next couple of weeks. So we move on to the next slide, please, Dan. Schedule status, project's currently on schedule at NAP and at the Crawford Stadium. So this is the, the layout that we'll be getting monthly updates on. And so at this point, there are no critical issues. And moving into the next slide, you'll start to see some photographs of the first few days of the stadium mobilization and the track and field demolition. All the fencing's down. You can see the construction entrance, which is coming off of Summeytown Pike, so that there won't be any construction vehicles entering off of Sider Road or Valley Forge Road through the parking lots. Everything will be coming off of Summeytown Pike. The next slide is a connection, you can see the away stands are demolished in these photos, and also the, the away ticket and concession stand. And we have a short, about a minute and a half video that Mr. Gilmour put together that will show you. I think it's a, it's a nice, quick, short video. Would you make it to full page? Thank you. When the, when the real video, you will hear some background music, but you can see the track surface is peeled up off of the existing asphalt, that's existing asphalt, asphalt, and there's the track surface. They just took a back end front bucket and peeled up the, it's a polyurethane product. You see across at the visitor stands, the track, demolishing all of the stands. So the, the stands came down in probably less than a day, the track did a pretty quick job of it. And as we go through, you'll see all the debris that's cleaned up right now. And some of the items that have been taken down, you'll see in the next few shots, you'll see there's the entrance from Summeytown Pike, this, the, with the stone entrance, the track. And then the goalposts are down. So we can close that, Dan, and go back to the, go back to the presentation. If you can scroll down through all the Crawford Stadium, we can get to NAP Elementary School. At NAP Elementary School, the first item was for the asbestos abatement contractor to do ceiling demolition, because we put it in his scope of work, because he had to remove the ceilings to get to the asbestos. The area you see on the left-hand side, that left-hand picture, has no asbestos above the ceiling, that's a newer area. And he was just responsible for demolition of the ceilings. Scrolling down, you can see some more demolition of the ceilings, and then classroom number 10. And moving down further is the cafeteria hallway, and then the classroom. The classroom has the window demolition wood being installed over top of it. So there's some progress photos. Currently, right now, the building is in asbestos abatement with full containment. And that completes that update.
Fantastic, I really, we, we all appreciate seeing these developments, looking forward to future updates. Thanks for that template you created. Any other questions or comments from the committee?
Yes, Mr. Costa, Mr. Schneider, two things. One, I'm requesting that safety be part of the presentation, just, just an update to the board or this committee in particular regarding, have there been any safety issues, any accidents? So we are aware of them. One or two bullets, I think, I think the presentation, any construction project presentation should start with the safety analysis. And I would like that to happen for NAP and Crawford, if you agree. And basically, for the bullets, and again, I know we're going to talk off later about the, the actual schedules, but for, for the, for the level of detail that's provided in the presentations here, I would like to see next to the bullets for the items, the timeframe that this work is being conducted in. And if the item is being completed, and when you say next period, that really is, what, what does next period mean? So I'd like it to be a bit more quantitative. And that's why, and you being able, just to walk that down with the committee. But if that is not something we're going to do right now, there need to be, for me, I need to see just a high-level date for your update bullet, okay? Is that something that is burdensome, or we think that's doable?
Well, a couple of things, let me first address the safety reports. On NAP Elementary School, this is an OSIP project, it's an owner insured project in which Willis and Liberty Mutual will be out on a weekly basis and provide safety reports to us. They actually have an inspector that comes out weekly and will take photographs and note any, any concerns that they have. And they're, I've had them on numerous projects, the same inspector has been on numerous projects that I've been involved with, and he's very thorough, I can provide that report as an information piece.
You know what?
Pardon me?
Yeah, you know, no, I'm not looking for that level of detail, I appreciate that. But I just mean just one or two bullets at the beginning, that no safety issues occurred or it was resolved. I'm not looking for granularity, just a statement, because I think the board with these massive complex projects that we're undertaking need to keep a focus, eye to safety and just an awareness of, have we encountered anything? Because, I mean, I know you will address this, and I, I understand what you're doing on a daily basis. Just no safety issues at Crawford, no safety issues at NAP, we had one safety issue, this is how it was resolved, blah, blah, blah. That's it. Not to make it complicated.
Yep, yep. Okay, very good.
You.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Wesley. We move on next to, we're gonna have construction site visit opportunities, right?
We were at the NAP Elementary schedule.
Forgive me, you're right.
This, this schedule is a preliminary phase one schedule that the contractor prepared. And essentially, it just shows what work will be coming up in the future. If you look at the, under the site work area, that we are looking at right now, and S-Control's starting, so demolition will start next week, and the access road will start. All that is permitted under the Borough's demolition permit, so we're moving forward with the site work. And as the schedules get updated and more information, we'll be providing to the committee.
Mr. Schneider, correct me if I'm wrong, but our construction management firm, specifically Bill Slaughter, one of his responsibilities is to monitor the schedule and make sure he's reporting back to the district if there's any deviations from the schedule?
Absolutely, Bill Slaughter is a very experienced individual in the construction industry, and he, and his firm, ICS, is acting as the owner's representative and also construction manager. They don't have any responsibility for contracting to any one individual company, they are responsible to the district.
Mr. Schneider, and we talked before the meeting, and I'm just gonna say that if, if a member of the public or anyone looked at the schedule, it is, for me personally, it's not a schedule, it's not a status of where we are. Somebody looked at this candidly, and I'm sorry to provide negative feedback, but it's dated June 23rd, and we're seeing 0% progress. And that, we need to, we, what we put out during this meeting needs to show that we are being responsible, that we're, the oversight for these projects is, is correct and accurate. Because if someone gets this, they're gonna say, what is this? You know, you haven't even started it yet. So this isn't just about being negatively critical, and I want to see the update. I'm concerned that a lot of work has already been started, monies have been spent, but the schedule, which is the mechanism that would, people would see, they're not gonna know. So either let's remove this and utilize the bullet points with due dates that you, you have provided, or replace that with a schedule that does provide an accurate update as to progress. I think there's more questions regarding this, or could potentially be more questions regarding showing something like this than not having it at all.
Very good, we can add bullets to the next presentation, for sure, absolutely.
Thank you for that feedback, Ms. Wesley.
Thank you.
Okay, we move on to the next topic, please, Mr. Schneider. Oh, you're muted.
Sorry about that, we wanted to bring to the Facilities and Operations Committee for an informational item. And that's not it, Dan, this is just, has no attachment, so if you can close that out, thank you. So we received three quotes, we need to empty out the library of the books and then store the books. And we received three quotes from three moving companies, Hughes Custom Logistics for $7,881.50, Light Movers for $9,840, and O'Malley for $8,600. This would include the moving company coming in with carts, specialized carts for library books, move the books onto the carts, label them, wrap them, and then store them in their warehouse for a period of 18 months until the library is reopened. The benefit of, one benefit of Hughes Custom Logistics, which is not only the, the cost, is they're located right on Cannon Ave and West A Street, right near at the North Penn Business Park. And we would have ability to access those books if we needed to for the librarian. She pulled a lot of titles out of the library to work with during the school year. But if she was in a dire straits or needed it, they would be able to go into this warehouse, look at the cart, find the, the number of the book, and then pull books out of it if necessary. We just wanted to bring it to the board for full disclosure, and there is no requirement for board approval on this because it is below the quote limits and also the public bid limits.
Thank you.
I have a quick question about access to materials. I'm grateful that the teacher was able to pull items to be able to use, but if it's 18 months for that renovation of that section of the building, it means that, what will be, what is the plan for children to be able to have access to books to check out during that, that one school year that will be affected?
Well, that's been worked out with the principal. The librarian has a lot of titles that she pulled out, and I think they were the, the, I guess, the highest used, highest read titles. And at this point right now, she has, you know, numerous titles, and she's going to be going to the classroom, they'll be having a special go-to the classroom, and they'll be providing the books to the students in some means.
Great, I, I appreciate that update, this is a type of things that I certainly would not have thought of. And assume that the Policy Committee or ECI will, will also get this type of update, because I think that's where there might be further questions or insights. But appreciate you bringing that up with the Facilities and Operations Committee.
You're welcome, thank you.
I've moved on to the next.
Yeah, the next item is just a discussion regarding construction visits opportunities by the Board and the Board members, committee members. And just wanted to get an idea if there's an interest and how often, at this point right now, the Crawford Stadium will be interesting because of the demolition. We can schedule things in the evening, we can schedule things during the day if necessary. I would hold off on that, because most of the work is being performed in containment areas right now so that there wouldn't be that much to see. But I'd be wanting to hear the committee's desire for possible construction visits.
Mr. Schneider, this is Kathy, I would like to, of course, visit the construction site, and I don't want to be disruptive, so I'll defer to you as to the time of day that is best that I attend. I mean, I can come during the day, or I could come at night, whatever you prefer. You know, my background, my curiosity would be to come in the morning when they do the morning debrief and they do all that, you know, sign in and they kick the day off just to see how that works. Or, you know, and my thought would be based upon what's going on, that I would want to come weekly for Crawford at this point, since there's so much activity.
The last part broke up, Ms. Wesley. I heard you can come weekly?
I, yeah, I would like to come weekly, and, sorry, it broke up. How about I text you? Or pardon me, let me, let me email you so it's clear, but I would like to come weekly, and I'll discuss with.
Okay, we can make that, we can accommodate that.
Thank you, Ms. Wesley. Any further questions or comments on the topic? At this moment, I, I'm going to have to hand the gavel over to Madam President Stoll, I have to step out for something which has come up. But I appreciate the ongoing conversation, and I'll just be able to take the screen off, but I'll continue to listen, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Costa.
The next item is the Crawford Stadium fundraising. I spoke to Christine Lebraski over the weekend, and she just provided a, just a statement about the fundraising and the items that were collected. So if you can scroll to the next page. So essentially, I So essentially, items from Crawford Stadium have been put into storage for use at a later date in fundraising efforts. Items include pieces of the track, that peeled up track, goalposts, scoreboard, and field signage. And so although the stadium for the future gala was postponed in April, it is being planned for the spring of 2021, the plan will be developed, include the safe Crawford Stadium items for possible use in the live silent auctions and direct sales. So those items were pulled from the stadium during the demolition. And the actual, the, the seats, the grandstand seats, we got a couple pieces of those before they got demolished also. So we'll be saving those and taking direction from the, from Christine on how we're going to proceed with it.
Mr. Schneider, did we happen to save the Crawford, Coach Crawford sign that was on the front of the ticket building? It had his picture and, you know, who he was? Do you know if that got seen?
The, on what, where?
It was on the ticket booth, like when you go down to the stadium, like the snack bar, and where you get that ticket window, there was a sign next to the ticket window. It had a picture of Coach Crawford and it had all his accomplishments and.
That, that was saved. Yeah, because, yes, I'll find out, I'll confirm that. But that, the building was not demolished. So, yeah, I'll find that out.
Mr. Schneider, it's definitely taken off the building, for sure.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Bob.
Bob's our local historian. I should have just asked Bob. I'm sorry. You've got all the North Penn paraphernalia, right?
Tom, I just want to thank you for kind of that last minute idea and being able to accommodate that. I think with some of the future fundraising ideas, this was kind of a creative solution. And I appreciate you being able to kind of help facilitate that in the midst of bulldozers coming in. So thank you.
You're welcome. It was a collaborative effort of Bill Slaughter taking surveys of things in the field before they got demolished, controlling the contractor, not moving too fast. Christine and Bob Beilmer being involved in what would be worth it. So, yeah, it was a collaborative effort and look forward to trying to put them in some type of a format that people would be interested in.
I heard a rumor that Mrs. Stoll is going to bid $10,000 for one of those goalposts so she can put it in her backyard.
Yeah. I have a piece of Penn State goalpost and I want a piece of my Penn goalpost.
You can have, you can have the whole thing for the right price.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. The, the next item is a, a discussion about the varsity softball and JV baseball field rehabilitation. Dan, could you bring that up on the screen? So in the, prior to the shutdown of the schools and prior to the spring sports season, the coaches, softball coach, baseball coaches were concerned about conditions of the varsity softball field and the junior varsity baseball field. We asked Dave Horn from Arcatara, the designer of the stadiums, to inspect the field. And he provided us with a, what's called a parameters and expectations of field renovation, just a written outline so that we could obtain quotes from contractors to make the repairs. So we asked for, for firms, three firms to review the recommendations and provide quotes. If you scroll to the next page. So the quotes received, in combination, the total amount, all exceed the public bid limit. And you can see that there's a great variance in, in pricing. And it's because it was not a strict design. There was not specific elevations provided. And it was just a generic, try to obtain these goals on the fields. And one of the items for the Grace Industries, they were the general contractor for the Crawford Stadium renovations, they would have to do that work in their form of prevailing wage, which the other firms did not include prevailing wage. So moving to the next slide. So because of the, it was no specific design, there were different scopes of work on each quote. So to provide more consistent pricing, we should have the field survey and design documents developed. And once the design survey documents are completed and designs completed, one item that we found out late Friday afternoon from the Montgomery County Conservation District is that we would have to resubmit as a major modification to the Crawford Stadium MPDES permit. The MPDES permit is a federal permit. It's the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permit, which takes about three to six months to obtain. And if we were to go in that, that process, that method, and because of the Crawford Stadium we're progressing, Montgomery County Conservation District will be making periodic inspections to the site. And if we don't go through this process, they will shut down the project, the Crawford Stadium project. So with the fee, we asked for what the fee would be to survey, design, and amend the MPDES permit. And that's estimated at $15,500. With the work being estimated somewhere around $70,000 to $90,000 because we would have to do this work in prevailing wage and under more strict constraints. So our recommendations right now, because we would not be able to have the, the softball field in playing condition by next spring if we had to go through this MPDES permitting, which would take three to six months. We will perform minor repairs on the softball field lips, get rid of the puddles. And we will regrade utilizing one piece of equipment which we just received that was in the budget. It's an ABI groomer and we'll talk about that in the next and last section of the meeting. We will perform minor repairs to the JV baseball field, but the JV baseball field will most likely out of play for, until the Crawford Stadium is complete. Because the outfield is, has utilities running through it, but also because of the, there's a hull room, that's H U A U L, where the dump trucks have to haul dirt back and forth from the field and back to the, when they complete the entry to the stadium and bring that back to grass and be hauling dirt back and forth. So that'll probably be out of play for some time. And we could work on the infield and try to get that into shape. Once the project is completed and the MPDES permit is terminated, then we would not have to worry about the, going through an MPDES full major modification. We would have to go to soil conservation because it is a disturbance of 5,000 square feet. But we would not have to go through all of the other things that we would have to with the MPDES. So our recommendation is to try to do repairs from this point forward. And one of the benefits that we have this fall is we don't have the football field to maintain. Chris Frisco, who is our main person at the high school, can spend a large portion of his time on the other fields around the high school rather than spending it on the football field, which took a fair amount of time to line, to cut, and to maintain that field. So with that field out of play for this year, we have more effort, we'll be going into the baseball and softball field and trying to improve all those conditions, all those fields. So that's our recommendation for the softball and JV baseball field rehabilitation.
Mr. Schneider. I wonder if the JV baseball team is going to be playing while the construction of the stadium is going on?
Pardon me?
Where will the JV baseball team, where would they supposed to play during this construction? Are they going to have all away games or were they going to play on the varsity field and alternate?
Yeah, I believe, I believe last year the JV field was not used either. And I believe that they were alternating fields and all. We'll have to discuss that with Bill Borden.
Mr. Schneider, two things about the proposed, the recommendation. So there would have to be some modification made to the existing permit, but it would not be, not a long duration before we received approval? Disruption of, disruption of soil or something?
It's the MPDES permit. It's a federal permit that we have to provide a major modification for. That would take three to six months to get that.
No, not that. But if you, if you went through with the, the recommendation for the minor work, there still would be some type of modification that would have to be made because of a disturbance of soil for a large amount of soil, or is that what I heard? Or I misunderstood?
There, there would not be, for the work that we would do in-house, would not be any need to modify the MPDES permit. We would be under the disturbance levels. Yes.
Okay. So doing what you're proposing to do, does, does that mean that that work that you're doing, is that good for a season, two seasons? The cost of that versus the, the big long-term fix? I mean, I understand that's your recommendation, but, you know, is it like walking over a dollar to pick up a nickel kind of thing? So what are your, what is your recommendation or thoughts on that, please?
Well, my recommendation, what we would be doing on the, the minor work on the infield would strictly be that. Both fields, the softball field does need work on the outfield. It does need to be regraded quite a bit. But that's not the biggest problem that we have right now. After rains, many games have to be postponed or played elsewhere because of puddling and standing water. If we get rid of the lips and regrade the field, we'll be able to have better play on the softball field. The JV field, we will start to work on that to get grass growing back again. We got inundated weeds on the infield. We got rid of those weeds and now we want to get the grass growing back in preparation of getting it started in two springs.
Thanks. So this would be a long-term fix to the existing problems that continue to recur?
Yes, and we may need to do some contractor work down the road. But this is an immediate fix because we do have the time to spend on it this fall.
Thank you.
The next item is just an update on athletic field maintenance. And let's see, there it is. Dan, could you bring up the athletic field maintenance update? Thank you. Scroll. Now that's the JV and softball. Go to the next item. Athletic field. Oh, that is. Okay. Scroll down. There you go. Very good. Thank you. Since May 27th, Facilities and Operations Committee, the grounds crew has been split, their time has been split between athletic field maintenance and other responsibilities, including the graduation, moving high school grounds equipment to temporary facilities, and now preparing for fall sports practice, which are commencing in two days. Since the sports are commencing July 1st, the contractor utilized for mowing the properties has been contacted to return to North Penn. So in the past few years, we've had a contractor actually mow the grass at our elementary schools. And since our grounds crew will be utilizing field, field maintenance, athletic field maintenance, we've contacted that contractor and him will be able to commence cutting grass this week to relieve our staff from cutting all of the, the properties. So in turn, the, the field maintenance that has happened to date, on June 16th, we had all of the middle school fields and high school fields fertilized. And we put weed control down for the pre-summer fertilization treatment. So that, that process is still ongoing. Pendale baseball and softball fields have been groomed. Henbrooks is in process of being groomed right now. The high school fields are being lined, the practice football field, the band field, and also the soccer fields are being lined for the July 1st start. Varsity baseball field will be grown in the next week. Today, the, all the grass got cut. And there was some soil erosion sedimentation controls that needed to be modified to allow access to the field. So that happened on Friday and they were able to access the field for cutting today. And then, as I mentioned in the previous discussion, we purchased a specialized piece of equipment. It's called ABI laser and it's a baseball groomer. And Dan's going to take, take the video right to about one minute, three, about 35 seconds. I'm going to just show you. That's good. So basically, this device, you set up a laser on the field. And after you have the, the laser set up, it can be for flat or slope surfaces. This is a device we purchased. It automatically grades the field to within one eighth of an inch. And it's all done by laser. So it's, it's a fabulous piece of equipment. It'll help our production and also alleviate those grooming by sight, which creates a lot of puddles and we can't get rid of the, the water. So this piece of equipment is going to be invaluable for us to have better playing surfaces on our baseball and softball fields. Thank you, Dan. So that concludes that update on the athletic maintenance.
So is that machine going to keep the water from puddling up there in the baseball field?
What that machine does is in the infield, it will grade the infield so that it slopes off properly so the water can drain. So one of the difficulties in baseball fields is as you groom the infield, you start to develop like ridges around the grass area from the infield mix. We cut those down, slope the field, and then the water will drain. And the ABI laser will grade it so that it's flat and smooth and won't have any of those little deviations and divots that puddles will be forming. So it's going to be an invaluable piece of equipment for us.
Mr. Schneider, how much did it cost?
That piece of equipment cost is $25,000.
That's great. I mean, so, and is it, can it be transported to different locations? Is it easy to, is it about, I guess, what's it weigh?
Yes, it can be transported. It can be utilized to spread seed, fertilizer. It can also be used to spread infield mix. So it's, it's a very versatile, it can groom, it can cut, it can blade. So it's a very versatile piece of equipment for us.
Did any of your staff, any of your team have to be trained to, to learn how to use the laser?
We have training coming in August, the company. But the representative from lawn and golf who we purchased it from has offered to come on site anytime to train us.
That's great.
Yeah, it's, it's a great piece of equipment.
It looks fun.
Yeah, absolutely. Wouldn't mind trying to ride it myself.
Me too.
The last item on the agenda is just a quick update on the annual supplies. I was asked to keep this as an ongoing document. And so, Dan, could you pull up the supplies? There it comes. So this month in June, and we'll, we'll just keep like somewhat of a running list of some of the things that we purchased in preparation of the next school year. So for the personal protection equipment, we purchased an additional 50 cases of surgical mask, 50 each of disposable gowns. These gowns will be utilized if in fact there was a potential COVID-19 case and the custodians would have to go in with gloves and masking, a gown on to empty trash and do some sanitizing. We also ordered 75 boxes of vinyl gloves, not the nitro gloves, but vinyl gloves to have in, in stock. On the supply side, we ordered an additional 100 cases of four, one gallon each gel hand sanitizer for refillable dispensers. We purchased 65 cases of four, one gallon jugs of vital oxide disinfectant. And that's what is used in the backpack hydrostatic sprayers. We purchased 10 cases of 3M 25-AH Quat disinfectant, 12 cases of disposable wipe buckets. Since disposable wipes are really not available on the wholesale market, the Lysol and Corax, we're planning to create our own, we'll buy the buckets and disposable wipes and then use our disinfectant as the liquid to create our own sanitizing wipes. And the plan would be to provide them for the classrooms. We also ordered 25 cases of disposable wipes. The 12 cases of disposable wipes right now was figured for the summertime for nutrition services, for technology, and all the support services that are happening in the summertime. It was not intended of 12 cases of disposable wipes and 25 buckets to go around the whole school. We will have to probably put out a bid for that. And then we purchased 50 cases of hand soap. So the supplies that we are going to look at purchasing in the near future are surgical masks, nitro vinyl gloves, and some face shields. There's discussions about the possible use of face shield. And then some 2,000 generic sanitizing dispensers, 3,000 disposable wipe boots, and then disposable wipes for refills of those. Now, one of the items that we're encountering right now Now, one of the items that we're encountering right now is still the supply chain limitation. But one of the biggest difficulties that we have, we can purchase items on state contracts through Co-Stars or many other different state agencies. And with that contract, the vendor, uh, for example, let's say Office Basics, has a list of manufacturers that they are allowed to sell at state contract price. Well, what's, what we're finding is the supplies that are needed, like the dispensers and the hand sanitizer and the face mask, the Office Basics cannot get that manufacturer that's listed on Co-Stars. So they're, they're bringing in any manufacturer that they can find available. Well, unfortunately, we cannot buy that on Co-Stars, which will then force us into a public bid arrangement. So this, that's just one of the things that we have to look at and figure out in the next few weeks. So we can get a public bid out to get the supplies in. So that's just one of the problems that we're running into right now with the supply, supply chains. And that concludes the agenda. If you have any questions on that or anything else, um, be happy to answer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Schneider. Does anyone have any questions?
I really appreciate the way that you presented that and kind of looking at what we have, what we've been able to purchase and the challenges. You, I know that we've discussed this before. You feel that we're ready. We have enough right now to be able to start the school year and get us through maybe half of the year. So you're really looking at trying to purchase to make sure that we have enough for the full school year. Is that, is that your goal? Is that your, is that kind of the long-term goal or objective there?
Yes, um, the one item that, uh, there's been a lot of discussion, uh, with administration is to get a hand sanitizing station in each classroom, which we don't currently have. And that's those 2,000 sanitizing dispensers that we want to order. So that would, uh, for that to happen at the start of school, we will be putting out a public bid on that. We're trying to find a, um, a state contract that has the, that quantity. So, uh, but we are looking at a generic, uh, dispenser so that they can be refilled. And we're not going to rely on a proprietary product that can only accept this one product. So, um, the hand sanitizer that we purchased is a liquid gel base that is pourable right into a, a generic dispenser. So, uh, yes, we're, we're in good shape. We just need to get those dispensers and get them installed. And that won't be a problem, uh, before the start of school. And then we're in pretty good shape as far as, um, sanitizing supplies and things like that.
Great. Thank you so much. I appreciate that update.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. Um, can you summarize then? If nobody else has any other questions, can you summarize? What we'll be taking to action, please?
Yes, uh, we'll be taking the gift donation to the district from Hatfield Elementary School for the two benches. We'll be taking that to Action Committee.
Okay. And that's it? That was the only thing, right? So everything else was presentations?
Pardon me?
Everything else was a presentation? So that was the only thing that we're taking to action? Okay, great. Thank you. All right, um, that brings us then to, um, our second, um, public comment. Mr. Gilmer, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make public comment?
We have a couple of hands. Um, Mr. Rush is in the, uh, public area as well. Uh, he raised his hand on the last, um, question. So I don't know if you want to bring Mr. Rush in to ask about the, the supplies portion there, if we want to open his mic up, if that's all right?
Okay, that sounds good.
Hi, Mr. Rush. Your mic is open. Uh, you can unmute yourself and, um, then ask your question.
Well, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to talk about the supplies. I wanted to talk about Landstone Electric. I know that Landstone Electric is starting a big solar project and I'm all for solar. And I was wondering how much that would affect the future, uh, uh, future pricing and quality of the service that we get from Landstone Electric. Thank you.
Thank you.
Not that anybody.
Did you have a? Oh.
Um, unfortunately, um, Mr. Kraus and Mr. Herbert are not on the line to talk about that. Uh, we could ask them that information and bring it back to Facilities and Operations at a later meeting.
That would be great. Thank you.
Okay, we do have one, uh, one hand up currently from the community. So again, if anybody else also has questions, go ahead and raise the blue hand. I'll put you in order here. Uh, Mr. Monero has a question. So I'm going to unmute his mic. And so when you're ready, Mr. Monero, you can make public comment.
Okay, uh, thanks, Mr. Gilmer. Um, thanks, everybody, for all the information. A lot of stuff you guys had on your agenda tonight. So I know it's, it's heavy. Um, just from the baseball field standpoint, um, I know that it's not a top priority in grand scheme of the world right now. I mean, we have to figure out how to open schools. So I always want to preface that because I'm not delusional to think that this is a big issue district-wide right now. But it is my responsibility as the person who is in charge of the baseball program to advocate for our needs and to ask a lot of questions and to make sure that things are being done correctly. So that's why I take the time to do it. Um, first, uh, as far as the JV field goes, um, this is the first time that I've heard that we are not going to have an available junior varsity baseball field for the 2021 spring. Um, we are going to need an alternate site for both practices and games. We have a very large program. Uh, one of the largest roster sizes of any team that we play, actually probably the largest roster size in number of kids, which is no surprise because we have an enormous school. Um, so we certainly cannot do that on one field unless we had lights on the varsity field and we could go back to back, which we don't. Um, so that's, this year it was a last minute decision that we weren't going to be able to play games there, uh, because the field was in such dangerous condition. Um, so we were still planning on trying to practice on that field because we could practice around the bad areas, but live games we weren't going to be able to do. Well, now it sounds like we're going to need a new site for our daily operations for next spring. So that I do believe is the plan is going to have to come together. Um, I also just wanted to mention, um, I'm thrilled at the purchase of that, uh, field maintenance, uh, piece of equipment. I've seen those at trade shows. They're very impressive. My concern is that we're spending $25,000 on that, um, and that it doesn't really work unless it's used. Um, and I want to make sure that we have adequate hours to be given to Chris or whoever else to use the machine properly. Uh, a lot of the work that has to be done on the JV field right now is a reflection of years and years of lack of regular maintenance. Um, I would say the same is the case for the junior varsity or for the varsity softball field. We did some work on our field last, uh, spring, late last spring to remedy our water problem. But since then, um, I'm already seeing, uh, lack of maintenance eat away at that. There's weeds growing up in the new sod. Um, there's no additional conditioner that's been added in the last year. The infield, the infield dirt has only been groomed one time, I believe, since March 12th. So it's the daily maintenance and that's, and I know this year there's circumstances beyond our control, but I wouldn't bring it up if I didn't see this every year. And it just seems like every year there's just a different reason. I know a lot of you haven't been in these same positions for all these years, but I've been a coach with the program for 18 years and, um, it's been 14 years since any significant work was done on the baseball fields, on the infield grass. So it seems to be more cyclical than anything. So I just want to bring that up, um, hopefully to remedy any of those long-term problems from happening again.
Thank you, Mr. Monero. Are there any other, um, public comments?
If there's any more questions, go ahead and raise your, your hand in the interface. We'll give them a moment here. And I do not see any additional hands. So I think that's it for public comment tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmer. So, Mr. Schneider, to, um, Mr. Monero's question about that machine being used, is Chris going to be the only one trained on that or will there be several people?
Well, the, uh, our middle school people will be trained on it also. They have, um, middle school has a similar machine, but not the laser. So the laser portion is what needs more training, just so that we know how to use it and utilize it, uh, properly. So we have, at this point, um, Chris will be trained on that specific item. But we also have other people that have worked at the B I M pass. So we do have additional people.
Does anyone else have any other questions? Okay, then, um, the next Facilities and Operations Committee meeting will be scheduled for Monday, July 27th, 2020 at 6:30 PM. And, um, I think it's still going to be virtual, but, um, location to be determined if that might change. So. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Happy fourth of July.
Take care.
Bye-bye.